Let's have a pledge of allegiance. Brian McCarthy. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Chair Gary Cushing.
Here.
Vice Chair Jamie Labor.
Here.
Commissioner Aaron Todd. Commissioner Cameron Carizales.
Here.
And Commissioner Miguel Magallanes.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Is there any oral communications from anyone? None? Okay. Okay, consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have said motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, passes. Okay, public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Consideration of a conditional use permit number 24-01 for an alcoholic license at the existing restaurant known as R and Q Kitchen located at 1024 Ventura Street and Secu categorical exemption.
Good evening Chair, Planning Commission, City of Fillmore. I'm Brian McCarthy. I'll be presenting this item. As mentioned, this is an alcohol license conditional use permit for RQ Kitchen. It's at an existing facility, existing restaurant within Bun and Chevrolet, shown here on your plan. The red square there is roughly the location inside that showroom building. No changes are being made to the structure itself. It's in the commercial highway zone and pursuant to the municipal code, any business getting an alcohol license requires a conditional use permit. Short summary of this restaurant, it occupies a 446 square foot kitchen and approximately 700 square foot seating area within the car dealership, which is a total of 12,700-plus square feet. They operate from 8:00 to 3:00 PM and are closed Mondays, but we went ahead and expanded the permit operating hours up till 9:00 and any day of the week just because we don't want them to have to come back for something that's trivial like that. So it's kind of baked in, they could go a little bit longer if they need to in the future. Here's a couple photos, you may have been there already. It's been in operation for quite some time. The applicants here can answer any questions at the end of this. But you enter the doorway there at the showroom and inside there's a kitchen and then you can see the seating area that's amongst some of the classic cars. We went through the municipal code analysis and the findings would not prepare the integrity of the zone district. It's consistent with Secu. It's compatible with existing and future uses. Does not, you know, does not create any kind of trouble in terms of density, intensity of uses. It's an existing facility. Originally, it was approved to have a cafe within the showroom going back a couple of decades, so they're really just kind of picking up the same sort of operation. Has adequate provisions for water and sewer. The conditional use permit was reviewed by the police department. They didn't find any issues with it. It does not occupy more than 5% of the retail floor area. A type 41 license is what's issued for a restaurant. It authorizes the sale of beer and wine, which can be for onsite or possibly even offsite sales. Distilled spirits are not allowed on the premises. They must maintain the license with ABC. And they must maintain an adequate kitchen facility, so it has to be a full-service food facility in order to have onsite alcohol consumption. Minors are allowed. And the service must be by, subject to responsible beverage service requirements of the servers and managers. So they'll work out this license and all the specifics with ABC. The office is in Ventura and we'll get a copy of that permit with us or will come out to us and then we can either object or not, but we send ABC a copy of this and we don't, we don't object. It meets Secu compliance as mentioned. There's no new facility improvements, so it's considered an existing facility. And it's also a license, it's just sort of a common sense exemption under Secu where there's no possibility of a significant effect on the environment. Staff's recommendation tonight is the Planning Commission adopt resolution 241048 approving conditional use permit 2401, subject to conditions of approval for the sale of beer and wine and a finding that the ABC license is categorically exempt from Secu. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian, for the presentation.
Sure.
I had a question in regards to the hours going to 9:00 PM.
Yeah.
Is there, is that the maximum that it can be done? As late as it can be done, I guess?
Well, that's typical, I mean, that's consistent with what the Red Engine Brewery has.
Okay.
And the applicant didn't ask for that. They close, right now they close at 3:00. And I'm not sure how late the dealership itself stays open, but we picked 9:00 to be consistent with other restaurants.
Thank you, that was my other question.
Sure.
We have any other questions? Cameron? Okay, I don't have any questions. Does Randy, do you want to make any comments?
No, we just feel we want to offer the best experience to our customers.
Okay.
Go ahead. Come on. Yeah, as I was saying, we just want to offer the best experience to our customers and we have a lot of people asking for either wine, or not wine, mimosas or beers on Sunday, which goes really well with our food, which is barbecue. So yeah, we just want to give, you know, the best possible experience to the customer and, you know, bring people together and, you know, have a good time. It's definitely something unique, it's in a dealership, so it's a very family friendly and oriented place, so yeah, we feel like we can, you know, do a good job and, you know, keep customers happy that way as well, so.
Okay, do we have any questions for Randy? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have any discussion?
More of a just comment, it's always great seeing local businesses come forward and try to improve the business for Fillmore and the city, so we appreciate that and anything we can do to help.
Yeah. Okay, I've eaten there many times and the food has always been good.
Yeah.
So, okay, do I entertain a motion for, to pass the conditional use permit number 24-108?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll read the whole.
Okay.
So let me read it after. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 241048 approving conditional use permit 2401, subject to condition of approval for the sale of beer and wine and finding that the ABC license is a categorical exempt from Secu Environmental Review pursuant to Secu Guidelines Section 15301 Class 1 and except from Secu under Secu Guidelines Section 15061B3.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that builds up number seven, 7A Training Session Downtown Specific Plan. Kevin?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. If you recall about two months ago, I said we'll start training, starting with the general plan and, which is this document here. All documents, all planning documents will, are, emanate from the general plan, right? So in the general plan, it describes the downtown as the following. The Central Business District, which is the downtown, the designation provides for retail business center with a special emphasis on tourism within the historic downtown area, distinguished from all other commercial areas in the city. In this area, commercial establishments are intended not only to serve city residents, but also visitors to the area. A high priority for this area is the establishment in support of street-level retail commercial uses to promote a lively pedestrian-oriented district. The Central Business District is implemented by the Downtown Specific Plan, which identifies specific land uses, development standards, design guidelines, and other recommendations. So this, that is straight out of the general plan and it describes the Downtown Specific Plan. So this is a very thin little document, there's not much to it, it just provides direction. To actually go beyond direction, a how-to is our specific plan as you can tell, it's a very worn document. And it has our architectural design guidelines in there. They're very detailed architectural guidelines to make sure that we have that historical architectural style, so we attract tourism, but also that we maintain our culture of downtown. Downtown's far different than the highway and it's also different than other cities, right? And it also describes in great detail how to create a lively pedestrian street. So I want to go over just a few of the general plan, no, of the Downtown Specific Plan goals. So if you look directly, it says protect and enhance existing small-town character. So if you have a modern building proposed there with walls right up against the street, that conflicts with this idea. We're supposed to have small-town character. We're supposed to encourage revenue-generating development. So sometimes an office isn't really revenue generating. It has its specific location, which would be above on the second floor or behind the street. Guide new development and renovation to assure relatedness between the individual buildings, both new and old. Identify opportunities and constraints which will affect the realization of the plan. Provide a yardstick against future renovations and development. Provide the opportunity for city and private partnership, provide housing opportunities downtown. So, you know, we have 300 residential units downtown. Are you aware of that? 302. And we, I just approved 50 units a year ago and the construction plans are in for that, so that's an additional 50. And you'll see in there, it says right here, pedestrians shop, a lively pedestrian shopping district at street level. So these are again visions and goals and I don't want to, I don't want to bury you in the detail of architecture, but architecture is very important. Recently, we've had businesses that wanted to black windows out and keep it where it's impossible to see the widgets or whatever it is they're trying to sell, right? And the downtown plan prevents that from happening, so we've had to have them remove it. Some of them have yet to remove it, but we have had to do some code enforcement and change that. Other people have started putting bookshelves against the window and so if you're a pedestrian, you can't see through it. So there's specific requirements for window displays too, right? And then we'll, we discuss signage requirements and some of the other architectural details. Attached or on your PowerPoint is the land use map for just downtown. So the red is the core area, Central Avenue primarily, and then the orange, that's the railroad area, and the yellow is called Zone of Transition. You can transition from that intensity of the Central Business District and then out. The Central Business District allows 50 residential units per acre. That's quite a bit. And it allows 100% lot coverage, so you don't need setbacks. And in commercial spaces, you're not required to provide space for parking. There'll be public parking lots. That's vastly different than what we do along the highway. We've already, one of the policies for downtown is that when we refurbish or rehabilitate existing buildings and development of new structures within the Central Business District, we should conform to the downtown architectural requirements. And then all new signs shall be in conformance to the design guidelines. All new and renovated developments shall conform to the design guidelines. So recently, the city had a campaign to renovate some buildings at the city's cost. We've received money to do that, ARPA money, and we had to review those upgrades compared to the downtown plan. And we compared it to all these guidelines and all this architectural integrity and all that stuff, right? So there is a tremendous amount of detailing that we go through. These pictures identify buildings that are model to the architectural requirements. So we have existing buildings except for the Masonic Temple in the upper left, which is no longer there because of the 1994 earthquake, removed it, but these are the, historically are the buildings that we've had and will continue to pursue. All new buildings will have these particular details. I don't want to go into all the dirty details and bore you, but I will say this. My purpose of the training is to show that everything starts from the specific plan. Last month, we reviewed the specific plan for the Heritage Valley Park specific plan and I showed how the general plan identified goals and policies and the Heritage Plan fulfilled those and then we've had the developments, why the development looks the way it does. The same thing for the downtown specific plan. It is the general plan that identified goals, policies, and objectives and it's just guiding you, but it is the actual specific plan that details how things are to be built. So when you hear complaints about the city, oh, the city's so hard, I couldn't put, I couldn't blackout my windows, I couldn't put cabinets against my window. That's right. The city council said you can't do those kinds of things and they put it in the specific plan. Oh, but you're so hard. The business, I know what I'm doing, I know my business, but it goes against the specific plan and the specific plan is following the general plan, which is showing architectural integrity, lively pedestrian streets and all of those kinds of things. And I just wanted to be able to explain some of those, especially since we receive a lot of complaints that we don't allow businesses just to do whatever they want. I am not going to bore you with any more of the PowerPoint presentations or the language of the specific plan, but I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yeah? Cameron? I don't think we have any questions.
Perfect.
One question I did have, when the city did the, put the money up for the renovations, how many businesses actually took advantage of that?
I know of three. No, I know of three property owners, but equated something like seven businesses. So one property owner had, I think, four or five businesses. So that was a Ballard Furniture Store, they, and it's a big building with multiple tenants, I think. They had about four or five spaces there. And the Town Theater and we're reviewing right now Australia Market, which had 317. Oh, and I think La Fundita. Oh, and La Fundita. Those are the only ones that took advantage of that.
Okay, is that program now over?
Done.
Okay.
We'll finish with Australia Market and La Fundita. It's all been committed, but there's no more commitments to any other businesses.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you for the training.
Cool. Thank you.
Do you want to go and?
I do. I have a lot of updates on projects. I don't think I've updated you on projects in a long time. Let me get to my, the diaphragm. I'll read those off. Okay, starting with the dog park, I don't know if you're familiar, but we haven't had the dog park operational in a couple of years because it's been violation of the ADA, American Disability Act. The city council gave money to that project and we spent about $163,000 and we're now in compliance. We're going to ask the city council sometime in July to accept all the construction. We still have a little bit of work to do before July 9th and then the dog park, we hope, will be open. Sonic is under construction. The project along Highway 126 known as RV Storage or Don Duncan RV Storage, that's under construction, right across the street from the Eldorado Mobile Home Park. We have a car storage building at 1515 Ventura Street under construction. There's a significant amount of public improvements they need to do along E Street. They're far from beginning that part of their project. Nova Storage is under construction off of A Street. I don't know if you've seen that, but that's by the middle school. On, in the Bridges subdivision along Mountain View, it's track 5496, they have just one more unit to complete. And once they complete that unit and pay some outstanding fees and complete the entrance into Pole Creek, then that phase is done. I don't know if you know this, but there is a bike path constructed along Pole Creek. It's not open to the public yet, but once we have the gate at Clearwood and River Street, there'll be a large gate about 20 feet in width, the public will have access to that bike path. The Housing Element has been certified by the State of California with, subject to us completing one of the programs and we're underway with that program. We need to have that completed by December. I'll present that to the city council sometime in July or August so that they approve the If you're familiar with Tressel Way at Highway 126 where the green bridges are for the Bridges subdivision, we are reviewing the construction plans for that. And if you recall, the city council reviewed it, you reviewed the conceptual plans at your direction and the city council's direction, we have a dry creek bed. Nobody wanted an operating water fountain because it's very expensive, so we have a dry creek bed full of boulders in a natural environment on two acres, lots of trees, tower element, and a railroad car will be there and everything will be lit up and it'll say City of Fillmore. So we're reviewing those construction plans, maybe this time next year or earlier it'll be under construction. I approved last year, last September, a project that I was hinting at earlier along Palm Street between Highway 126 and Santa Clara Street, a 50-unit development. It's 100% low-income in conformance with state requirements and city requirements. They submitted those construction plans yesterday and we'll start reviewing the construction plans. I suspect two or three, maybe four rounds of that, so it'll take maybe about nine months to a year to process and then they need to seek funding. The city council approved last week, if you recall, the Williams Homes Project or the Creekside Development. You saw that, you guys had corrections to architecture and those types of things and the city council reviewed it twice. They had more, they relied upon you to do the design review and the city council kind of focused on affordability. They also had design comments that were a little more detailed than yours and they were a little more emphatic what to do on the entrance, the entrance to one of the houses, one of the styles. If you recall, we have a moratorium or we had a moratorium on RV Storage. The moratorium ended. The city council adopted and had the second reading on limiting RV Storage. That doesn't take effect just yet, it's 35 days or 30 days after that second reading. That gave a window of an opportunity for RV Storage businesses to submit applications. So we have two applications that we are reviewing for RV Storage. Let's see, that's all I have.
Questions? No? Well, I have one question on the RV Storage, was, the two was the one on 126 across from the new one being built?
That's one.
That's one and the other one is from north?
In North Fillmore.
Okay, so that's the same two that were kind of floating out before?
That's been following the entire process. Through that process or the two years, you know, Brian and I were both receiving phone calls for very large RV projects, but they did not submit applications.
Okay. And then you said Sonics is still not, not building?
No, the stop work order, I think it still might be in effect, but I can't remember. They are doing some public improvements at the stop work order, so you had to stop and they're making those corrections. I think the last item is a fire hydrant, so they figured a way with the police, Fire Department's approval to bring in probably a water tank, keep it onsite because the fire hydrant will take many months to get approval because you need Caltrans approval to extend water from Caltrans onto the property. So they're getting those things handled, but they've got water lines approved and constructed and some other things, so it's, you're starting to see some movement now.
Okay, because that's the biggest question for people out there.
Yeah, it's, as you know, it's not the City of Fillmore's fault.
No, I know, and I've said that many times to people, it's not the city, it's Sonics contractor.
Right, yeah, we're always to blame and I'm trying to defend the city, so we do need a fire hydrant and the fire chief will allow them to start construction, but they need fire protection. So he's saying you need one of those construction water tanks that you see up in the air, but before sticks go up, he's saying the fire hydrant needs to be installed.
Yeah, that's fair. Okay, thank you. No other questions? Okay, all right. 8B Planning Commission reports, does anybody have any reports? Miguel, did you attend to?
I did. I didn't attend the last two.
Okay.
I forgot about the last one and the other one I couldn't attend.
Okay.
But it's been going good with the Fillmore action team. I don't know how much of that I could share here.
Well, I think we picked the date.
Yeah, I have the other day and the fire.
Then you can, I think you should publicly go ahead and share what we're doing.
Yeah, so there is, what, what the team is trying to do is draw locals to the shopping and interaction of downtown. So there was a lot of ideas thrown up in the air and the one that stick and was kind of voted the most was making an event downtown. So the dates changed, but it's been finalized at July 20th between 11:00 AM and 2:00 PM. There will be food and I believe drinks and the librarian, fire, police, and a stage. I don't know what the stage was for. Imagine music?
Music, a jumper. It's called a family fun day, so it's intended for families with young kids. So it'll be short, 11 to 2, so it'd be a short period of time through the day. So it's still developing, but the city and the downtown merchants who are part of that committee are forming this, this event.
Okay, that's good. That's good. Jamie? Cameron? Okay, I don't have anything else, so we will move to adjournment and our next meeting is scheduled for July 17th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. in city council chambers. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.[1781.33]